Call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Brayden here, Levin, Mervella, McCarthy, Mayburn.
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation and pledge of allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Gaster Bicrop at the point church. Gaster?
All right. Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight and, Lord, in light of the things that have happened even recently over this weekend with the shootings and the loss of life and injured people and, Lord, I know that that's on a lot of people's minds. Lord, we just come to you right now and we pray that you would bless our nation, that you would give a sense of peace and unity to our people. God, I pray that not only for our nation but specifically here in our community. I pray for our leaders. I pray for their wisdom and discernment to lead this community, give them a sense of direction and purpose for this community of Winter Harbor. Lord, we thank for this evening that we were able to gather together in this place to discuss the things that need to be done for this community. So we pray for the people of our community. We pray for the leaders of this community. We pray for our first responders. We pray that you would just bless this community and we pray all this in Jesus' wonderful name.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every even justice throughout.
Need I have a motion to approve the June 18th, 2024 regular board meeting minutes? Discussion on minutes. Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to approve the June 25th, 2024 special board meeting minutes.
Hello.
Okay, decided. Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to Mayor's report. I'm going to start off by calling on our fire chief, Rocky Funtinella.
Yes, thanks for fitting me into the agenda. It wasn't on, but we had an incident on Friday that one of our firefighters did a really good job at and I had to get to their call for special recognition for him. And I'd like to just read a letter of commendation from the fire department presented to Brendan Rafferty. On Friday, July 12, 2024, you were part of a crew that responded to a report of a drowning in beach park on Lake Michigan. On arrival, you assembled your diet gear and were ready to act. The incident commander asked you to make a quick attempt to effect a rescue. Without hesitation, you made a calculated risk to give a child a shot at life. You went through the water, ball tethered, and only minutes later, you found the victim and brought her to shore where she was given care by paramedics. On behalf of the Winter Harbor Fire Department and citizens of our community, we'd like to commemorate your actions that day. Your selfless dedication to the mission of the Winter Harbor Fire Department did not go unnoticed. So I'd like to give you this, present this to you. That was a job well done and a little something for your wall.
Appreciate it.
And we appreciate it too.
Mayor.
Brendan. Thank you. On behalf of the village, amazing. I heard about this and you gave the child, you know, a chance to live. And that's right after you completed your diet and training. So thank you very much, Jeter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll hold that up by the board giving us the resources to be able to do stuff to help people is where it really starts with you guys and giving us the budget that we need to train our firefighters as well. And on a personal level, the fire chief, and I didn't realize this the other day because I was on the scene as well, but when I see you guys succeed as firefighters, man, that really hits me here and it makes me proud to be a member of this organization with you guys and very proud of everybody.
You're going to be very successful in the fire service.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. We move on to, I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing Laszlo Cosso as part-time police officer.
Second.
Discussion on that item.
Still in the stock, right? Do you have one part-time officer leaving?
Yep.
Glad you got him back. I know it's tough in the office.
The police department's doing a great job of filling these positions quickly. Yeah, we're still short, but we'll work on that.
All right, they can see those we can.
Okay, roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Couple other items. The Seventh Street Music Series starts tomorrow night right over here by the timeout or, you know, right by the community center, the parking lot there. It says it starts at 6:00 PM, so tomorrow's the first night, July 24th. Also, Wednesday will be the second and then July 31st and August 7th. So put that in your calendars and come out to listen to great music. Hopefully we'll have good weather for all four nights. The Summer Fair, I would like to thank everyone involved with this event, everyone that came to the event, primarily Parks and Rec, the volunteers, the Rec Advisory Board, and businesses that sponsored the event. And Touch a Truck is going to be on September 14th. That's the night we have rescheduled the fireworks and the band that were not part of the Summer Fair. So that was more details to follow. Had a meeting today with Marina and Skipper Buzz and Dave was virtual in that meeting. Wanted to just collaborate with us on certain items and certain things coming forward down the road, which we're all involved for collaboration, working with them because they're part of this village. And while I was there, I was asked to be a judge on the Venetian night for the bolt break, so I'm going to do that. So that's all I have. Move on to the village minister's report. I don't believe Dave had anything. Clark's correspondence.
Nothing.
Okay. Not old business, so new business, committee reports, administration and community development committee, trustee Brayden.
The first one, I need a warrant to set the count table on 2020-43 in the amount of $331,022.50.
Second. Discussion on the warrant. Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The second one is consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance to waive the first and second reading and move the to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second. Discussion on that. Need to do this if you keep paying bills, correct?
That's exactly right. This must be done this month.
Yes, by the end of July. All right. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next one I have is to, sorry, to approve adopting the 2023 Village of Winter Harbor zoning map of waive the first and second reading as adopted as presented.
Second. Just the zoning map is approved every year, so.
Did we have any significant changes? I don't remember.
A couple.
There were a couple.
There were.
Most of the changes in the 23 zoning map data were just cleaning up parcels whose boundaries had not been clearly defined. There are several parcels in the village where two or more were merged into a single parcel. A notable example would be the property at 14th and Monroe, which was two parcels but is now one. The boundary of the village has changed slightly with the annexation of 43032 North Fallsland.
We all got the map, obviously, but Dave was kind of always so cool. If you haven't taken a look at that, take a look. So Dave will be excited to know that you've all played around with it.
He's listening.
Yeah, I know. That's why I mentioned it.
It's GIS technology. It's quite.
I did have to show off the, another GIS map that was a little bit cooler, so he wasn't impressed. So I'm like, oh, you want to see a GIS map? I'll show you one.
That's just me.
All right. Sanjay, thank you for your input on that. I knew you had told me there were some changes, but I didn't know it was specifically about the work. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, I make a motion to approve the request for a relief for municipal code section 15506 support posting being specific to 716 land of the avenue only.
Second. Any comments or discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, I have a, make a motion for consideration for the owners of Harbor Cafe Living Pool Cabucha and Touch a Class Training to host an outdoor party scheduled on Saturday, 17th, August 2024, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM central time. Additionally, approval of a special event liquor license for Harbor Cafe.
Second. Discussion on that.
This is a pretty exciting event.
First one.
Yeah, Sanjay, I mean, we can talk more about the details, but, you know, folks mark their calendars, so it's a pretty big party. They're going to be closing off part of the road for more seating, correct?
Yes.
Is that what we're asking for, obviously?
The road.
Yeah, and, you know, it should be a great way to draw some attention to the businesses and have a little fun, so it should be very exciting.
Yeah, I do want to mention to everyone that even though the applicants for the special event permit are Harbor Cafe, Living Pool Cabucha, and a Touch a Class Training, Roma's Pizza will also be vending at the event as well as Cindy's Sweepstop. So there'll be a table for pizza and a table for desserts at the event as well.
We used to do this at the IGA, so this is something that people have been asking for this to come back to, so this is a good idea.
It was amazing back in the day. Everybody came for that shindig, so it was nice to see something like that come back. And I think that if anybody can do it, Sean and Rich are going to be the ones that can do it.
Yeah, it's going to be great. I mean, I'm looking forward to this.
And I think just, you know, the closing off will hopefully really call attention to people driving through, you know, to really, you know, I think, you know, anytime there's something, you know, people look and go with that, but when inconvenience is them, you know, that I think that's an extra way for people to really, you know, say, hey, check that out, you know, when they really think about it.
What are they doing there?
Yeah. It's a great way to get them to really stop to think about it.
And it's great you've got the whole building, you know, helping out with Roma's and Cindy's and Cabucha and. And Gary Powell offered up his parking too right there, so that's awesome for him. And that's perfect. Because we were always worried about perfect. This is going to be great because they have all their bases covered, which I think is so awesome, so it's nice.
They're supposed to clearly spend a lot of time getting this together, so.
Great. All right. So which the next paragraph?
Yes. Good luck. Oh, good. I couldn't, the podium was locked in, so.
Yeah.
Did you guys want to say anything last?
No, I mean, there's any questions, we can answer any questions, but that's about it. We've got a few more things planned coming forward, so we'll see some work on things happening that incorporates the whole business district.
Thank you, guys.
Anything comes up from the last one that you guys mentioned that you would look forward to seeing at this one, we'd be open Fridays too. Because I personally went around for the last one, so I'd be super interested in hearing about it, like what it all took place and stuff. Business and stuff like that.
It was like the whole town gathered at the J C parking lot and it always went smoothly.
Yeah.
And then it didn't.
Yeah.
But everybody loved it. I mean, it didn't matter what it was. You had to go, are you going tonight? Of course we'll go tonight. It's a good place to see your friends and sometimes you only meet people that one time a year. So it's nice to see something like that come back and really excited. And I'll be there in the house, by the way.
We're doing our best to make it, you know, totally family friendly and just give it our all and hope for the best, you know, so.
Excellent.
We hope nothing but good happens and be very successful.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, I have a, make a motion to approve the closure of the northbound lanes shared the road from Eighth Street to Ninth Street from 9:00 AM to 11:30 on the Saturday, August 17, 2024.
Second. All right. For the event.
For the event.
Yep. All right, roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, I have a motion to, make a motion to consider and consideration requesting to sign the contract with computer help key for Island Secure Cloud back.
It should be a motion to approve the contract or reject it, one or the other.
Yes. Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve requesting to sign the contract with.
It would be a motion to approve.
Just a motion to approve.
Yeah, I don't know who comes up with this line. That one just confuses the heck out of anybody. The point that's being made is clear, but.
So I make a motion to approve signing contracts with computer help key Island Secure Cloud back.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion on that? Second. Okay, all right. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried. This one, same thing.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the agreement with Harris Local Government for the update financial software with the cost of $14,754.96. I'm going to add not to exceed that amount.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right. We have a second. Second. All right, discussion on that. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Brayden. Provide on public safety. Trustee Levin.
I make a motion to approve the consideration to accept a notice of state of work for the grant from Illinois Law Enforcement Standards Training Board for body worn channel grant in the amount of $11,184.
Second. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the consideration of opening a lockbox account with the Hensfield Wind Trust.
Second. Discussion on that.
Basically, with discussion and people can ask more, Rocky, the ladies know more about it, but actually it helps them to better perform their duties, so this is just, it's a safe way at a event, so it's just another step in the evolving of the computer age.
Thank you, trustee. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move that we adopt the resolution to amend the ambulance and paramedic rates.
Second. All right. These are just, go ahead, Rocky, I know you probably wanted to talk. I know.
Yeah, so last meeting, we approved the change of paramedic rates and I made a mistake on it and did not change the mileage rate for the ambulance at the hospital. It was in the template I used, so we had to change that from five six feet to $25. That's all. My fault.
No problem, Rocky. All right, roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Levin. Move on to public works and recreation. Trustee.
I have a, nice. Make a motion to approve the consideration of purchasing a Trubag commercial refrigerator for Slater recreational center kitchen, amount not to exceed $1,350.
Second.
It's something we've been wanting to do and we're going to do it.
And we got a donation for a thousand and the rest of it we raised to do best.
Yes, yes. It's going to help us with treatment.
Nothing out of our question.
Yes.
Yeah, great. All right, roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Mervella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carried. So now we move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board, come up to the podium and just ask you to provide us a few of your thoughts.
Hello, my name is Alex Jones. I'm in 113, 1113 Franklin Avenue. So we've lived here for about seven years now. No problems, no issues. I've been dealing a lot with Sam today. Nice to meet you, finally in person. So he knows a little bit about what's going on. We just had an Airbnb open up in a foreclosed house right next to us. So this Airbnb, initially it was bought from foreclosure. They came in, remodeled, and then sold it to this other couple, this older couple. They have kids, probably my age, a little bit older. And they ended up making it into an Airbnb. They're renting all three bedrooms in the house for $50 a night. Now that being said, I don't know legalese. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. I have no idea where I stand. I'm trying to come in to you guys for advice as to what to do. We've had multiple issues with them telling us certain things and then those things not happening. And then we just, the other day, me and the wife, we're sitting in the living room. My four-year-old daughter was with us. She went into the kitchen to grab a snack and we had a guy, both doors closed, we had a guy walk straight into our kitchen. We had tent stuff because we were planning a camping trip that weekend. So he walked straight into our kitchen. My daughter Riley, she screamed. At first I thought it was my brother because I was sitting on the couch in the living. The wife noticed it, Emily, she noticed it. She got up and she said, this is my house. And so he yelled back, I live here. And so then I got up off the couch and I was, I was very, very close to him. I exchanged a few words to him as I was charging and then he realized what he had done and he backed out of the house, went straight to my garage. Now, this guy was under the influence of, I don't know what, but he was out sorts. So I walk out into the driveway to make sure he's not, he's exiting off of my property. Finally, I got him to leave and he went back to his 50 a night Airbnb that they're running out. Again, I don't know the legalese. I haven't felt so unsafe in my community and living here. We've, I guess, we've lived here for seven years and it's been great. We haven't had any issues, any problems. Then all of a sudden, they're opening up the village right between Zion and Kenosha to a three-bedroom house for, you know, that price a night, which doesn't make sense to me. On the other hand, they asked us to build a fence, that they could tear our fence up and build a fence, a privacy fence. I was on board. I was fine with that. So I said, yeah, go ahead, you can rip my fence up and then install, you know, your privacy fence or the fence that you want to install. So she was dealing a lot with Emily and they started building. Now, they didn't rip my fence up. They started building their fence right next to mine, so it's touching. A lot of the posts are very close to each other, so I can't pull my fence up now to, without, you know, breaking their fence, which then I'm on the hook for, as imagined. So she mentioned that she was going to pull our fence. She never pulled our fence. They ended up installing this new fence along my fence. And all the while we were camping this weekend, they did it secretly and they got into my yard and they built this fence while they were on my property, which I never gave permission to. They were very secretive about it. They never asked me. So when I got home, I got home to a half-built fence that looks like absolute garbage. It looks like a fence you would see in an alley in the south side of Chicago. They left nails in my, in my yard and tools, which I then threw away. So I guess I'm asking advice as to what to do, or at least it's in your guys' minds, the issues that I'm having. The guy coming into my house really scared me, really scared me.
He's lucky that you were a good person.
He's lucky I wasn't closer.
Well, there's a lot of people in Winter Harbor that conceal carry.
I do.
A lot. He's lucky you were.
I know.
Easily solved it.
So if somebody came to your house, did you call up?
Yes, I did. I did and I met with a police officer. I wish I remembered the name because.
Sergeant, this is Sergeant Gallagher when he spoke to him over the weekend.
Yes, yes, absolutely above and beyond. He was amazing.
That issue we resolved the best we could. He does, he does have some issues. We were able to contact his father to make other arrangements to get him out of that house. Basically, all we could do at that point was contact the homeowner and have them contact Airbnb to do sort of an eviction to get him out. Then we contacted his father and so on, made arrangements, we brought him down to Waukegan for the time being now.
Right, and.
So we could only deal so far with the Airbnb side of it as far as contacting the homeowner and having them lodge complaints against Airbnb, so.
And that's kind of what he said too. He went above and beyond. I mean, every nook and cranny of what I told him, he covered. He did really well. I felt really good about that. I did. But my, my issues about the $50 a night for a bedroom in the location wherein, it just scares me. It's going to bring in, it's going to bring in so much. And that's just the beginning, I feel, of what that house is going to see.
Have you noticed that these renters aren't long-term or have they just been coming and going when I rented Airbnb for a week back?
Yes, the first, the first man that was there, he was there for probably a month, month and a half. I did calculate it out. It comes to like $1,250 a month and it's cheaper than renting. And they don't have background checks and they don't have all of the apartment, you know.[1747.82]
So is that, Bob, excuse me for my ignorance on this, but I get the Airbnb part and I get families renting, but you can't turn it into a hotel Airbnb, right? You can't separate room. I mean, at that point, we could come up with an ordinance against that. I think we could vote something against that, right?
We, we sort of have an ancient, and I mean ancient, that goes back to the thirties ordinance that deals with rooming houses back when they were common during homehold days.
Yeah.
You know, to try to deal with the problem. The difficulty in, in enforcing a lot of this stuff is that we have really strong limits on the use of innocent power over private property. And the street court is making it more and more difficult to exert local government powers and local government things like who you rent to, under what circumstances, I can break it up. You know, our ordinance was designed when, you know, Gallagher and Sanjay called me in on this on Friday, which is how you get some relief, which you did. She gave you everything you possibly could on the law. And I think it's important that you know that, but, you know, there, there are times when our hands are tied as far as what we can tell people they can do with their private property. And there are, we have never had occasion yet, yours is the first incident that's come anywhere remotely like this. And I mean remotely, this is the only one we've ever had that's had any, any problems at all. And we have, we talked about adopting a, in one of our committees, we talked about adopting an Airbnb ordinance a few years ago. And we looked into, I gave us some drafts, including things from, oh, I think there were some from across the United States, but the most, the more common ones around here, like Northbrook and Highland Park, Buffalo Road, they have pretty, they have ordinances that stretch as far as the possible camp, but they have greater powers than we do because they have something called homehold powers. We don't have those. And that limits the amount of additional authority that we have to work with. And even there, like Northbrook's, for example, theirs grew out of a problem with a rapper called Chief Keith. Ran into that a few years ago. I made the papers a bunch of times and I didn't know what a Keith was till I read it. Anyway, but, and he had rented a place with an ongoing set of parties with a bunch of people that were staying there and created a great big nuisance. And that was what the genesis of the Northbrook ordinance was, but it took them, oh, geez, about six months to actually find a way to corral him in, even with, even with the amount of nuisances that he was creating with the problems that he has. Your situation is different, but it's really, it's, it's true. In many ways, it could have been much more serious than it was. It was plenty serious to be honest with you. I wouldn't have recommended confronting the guy too much. Would have suggested letting the police, sign out an arrest order for him, help him out in that respect. That makes more sense than trying to follow him up particularly into the, out of your house, get him out of, out of his house. I understand that part, but at some point, turning it over to professionals that are armed and trained for that circumstance, because you don't know what he had outside the house for that matter.
Oh, I'm giving, yeah, no discredit to the...
Yeah, I mean, he could have had a weapon out there. It could have been a much different situation. This is, this is bad enough, but luckily, no lives were, were lost and nobody was badly injured. I'm sure this was very traumatic to your daughters. But even, even in Northbrook and, and Highland Park, places of that nature, the landlord isn't going to be put out of business because of one tenant that did one thing one time, no matter how egregious that was. Because we can rent, generally speaking, we can rent our houses as we wish. If I wanted to take, rent mine out to somebody, I wouldn't have to do a background search. I wouldn't have to do anything to put whoever I wanted to my house and let him rent it and charge him fifty dollars a month if that's what I wanted to, which I wouldn't, I mean, that's what you can do. And in that circumstance, you know, the only thing we can do is exercise powers to come through the nuisance laws. There's, there's a bunch of special laws known as nuisance. And in order to do that, you have to start with the idea of giving notice to the people and an opportunity to cure it, to create that, to break the situation, which happened. Highland, right away. She did what she could. And that's about as much as, if that happened in one of those other communities where they have these advanced ordinances, that, this thing, exact thing would have happened. He would have been evicted and she would have had, thanked for obeying the ordinance and taking appropriate action as much as you could hope for. It's not a very good solution, but it's the one that we're left with because we can't require free screening for residents. We don't have any mechanism, a innocent power to require that.
So all of this, send this besides, you know, lock your doors and set up your cameras and do this and do that?
You know, it sounds like you've tried to make, you've tried to make as much progress in dealing with your neighbors and reach out to them as much as you can. And I've been an attorney for forty-two years and I've represented a lot of communities. And I can tell you that there are times when neighbor disputes grow out of control and they become very difficult to deal with.
And I don't know where else to go with this.
The only, the only solution that exists is to find a way to communicate with the neighbor. And sometimes that, that just can't work. Sometimes, when it works, you can solve a lot of problems. But when you can't, when you get to a point where there's a, where there's something serious that can't be dealt with on a legal basis, like did they get a building permit that doesn't need codes? You know, you can bring that to the building department. If you find that there's a rowdy party, we can shut it down. These are, these are the powers we have. And frankly, if they run the place in a, in a fashion that becomes a nuisance, then there are powers that we have under those nuisance laws. We can file for injunctions. We can file to bar them from using it in a fashion that negatively attacks their neighbors. But to become a nuisance, it has to be more than just a nuisance to you individually. It has to be a nuisance to the community as a whole, which is gonna be a really big, big flipping problem. In your instance, I mean, you can hire an attorney. You can, you have the right to file, file a nuisance complaint of your own. Whether at a goldney place or not, that I couldn't tell you. They rarely do over in the courthouse.
Well, like a waste of money?
Well, I wanna tell you, no, but you're on target for what'll happen. They turn into singles for money. Lawyers wanna get paid for it. They do. I can't bring the case on private citizens behalf of the villagers I represent. And I see, you know, when I've done this in the past, going back to thirty, forty years ago, the results really don't ever match up to what could be resolved through some dialogue and a better, a better chain of, of communication and a better understanding between, between people that have to live next door to them. And yours is one of the more extreme. But I'll tell you, there was one that was way more extreme than that. I dealt with, we got, got hand chopped off over fence. And you don't ever wanna go down that road too far. It's not worth it.
All right.
Now, Alex, my neighbor has got an Airbnb too. Had it for like three or four years. First thing I heard about, my wife actually Googled Airbnbs and found out our neighbor is long on the list. She's done a great job. People that come in there are very respectful. They, she's got a spot in their driveway for them. You know, she, we've never had a problem. I've even had to tell them because they were parked on the wrong side of the street, didn't see the sign. And they didn't give them a ticket because they gave them a warning. But, you know, they sold, no, you got parked on the other side. So, you know, I think a lot of it comes from the owner of the Airbnb.
Getting...
You know, I don't know what she does, to be honest with you. I don't know if she runs a background check on them or not. But, or maybe she lets, I'm not sure what she can do. But she's got, she's had nothing but good customers. I've seen license plates from Maine, from, from, you know, Colorado. So, I mean, it's, but I know...
Five dollars a night for a bedroom?
I know. But she rents the whole bottom of her house.
They rent the whole house for two fifty. The tenants don't even live there.
Yeah.
And so they're just letting it.
Yeah, I don't know technically.
Yeah.
Because we don't have, you know, an ordinance on Airbnbs.
Yeah.
You know.
All right. Yep, that's about as, as far as I've got with...
And I've seen a picture of the fence. You got chain link and they got a wood fence.
Yeah.
And the wood fence they got, I just noticed the top is like tiered down and the posts are a different color than the fence. You know, as long as they abide by the, you know, staying in the right area and making sure the post loads are deep enough, there's not a whole lot we can do.
And the weeds growing up in between the fences are...
I know. That's, that's why you don't want two fences close together.
I'm just supposed to live with it.
Yeah. I wish they would have pulled yours down. And I would pull yours down if that's what you wanna do. And let her know that if hers gets damaged, it's because it's so close. But then at least you can cut the weeds.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Alex.
All right, anyone else? Move on to unfinished business. I'll start with Trustee Brayden.
I do want to give congratulations to Fire Fighter Rec. What an accomplishment. And how amazing is that? So I definitely want to give him really a kudos and congratulations since he's passed on. I mean, I appreciate it. And I also just wanna thank Rich and Sean for putting on a shindig because I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. And it's a good way to bring the businesses together, which helps them that we, we often struggle to do. So I'm glad to see that somebody's working so hard to do this.
Thank you, Trustee Brayden. Trustee Maribella.
I wanna thank Scott and the Rec Department for a great summer fair, even though the weather kinda threw wrenches in things. So it seemed like it was a good event. I was out there for a couple things and both the Rec trustees, you know, putting a lot of time, well, the Rec volunteers and Rec Department are, you know, worked really hard for their lot. And I thought, well, Trustee Maribella and Trustee Whitmore, I know, were there working a lot and putting in time as well. And, you know, she had a lot of time with the trustees of their volunteering as well. And then I thought it was cool looking at the list for the, the event, the street fair that, well, Mayor, too, you judged the town show that was put on.
My wife and I both.
Yeah, your wife and I. There was a band of high school students that were in the town show. And then they came and just on the fly, they came and performed the next day because, you know, the band canceled Saturday night because of the rain. They came and like, ended up playing the next day on the fly. And now I see that they're lined up to play at the street fair. I'm like, well, that's great. You know, see these young folks going. It's kind of cool to just see the, you know, the community, you know, growing and everything through these events. So, so just thanks to everybody who had a role in that. And just want to mention, the work that E D C's been doing, it's Trustee Brayden, Ivan Beans, and Scott and Sanjay. And Turney Long, E D C is working last month meetings on evaluating the village's sign code that has been a while since it's been outdated. So they're currently reviewing that and looking at making recommendations to the planning zoning board. Will then bring recommendations to Turney Long to, you know, give recommendations to the village board as far as what updates we made to the sign code ordinance.
Good.
To bring it up to date. So hopefully, within the next couple months, E D C will have recommendations for the board.
I have to wanna say that even our trustee has a talent. But I didn't win. I thought he was, I didn't realize he was part of the talent. He's out there with guitar and harmonica. And he's playing. I'm sitting there going, my gosh, that's amazing. I gotta judge him. He did a great job. He had a talent in playing guitar and, you know, you know, playing the harmonica. Amazing.
We have some YouTube video we could post of the village, but...
I should have taken a video.
Jeez, I wish, I wish you had, Bear.
That was amazing. He did a great job. But I, I had to say that since you told me I judged. And he didn't get, you know, he didn't win, but...
But you lived by a lot of...
But you did a great...
Other talent was a lot better.
The talent was excellent. Everything.
I would have won. That was pretty sad.
Yeah.
State of talent, that's sad.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Maribella. Trustee Maribella. Trustee Maribella.
I'll keep this short. So, you know, if I've gone through some issues, some changes in life, then next month, I will be resigning from my position as those trustee. I appreciate working with everybody in the department apps and very grateful for the community supporting me and having faith in me as being the one voice here on the board. That's all I have.
All right, John. You've been amazing. I mean, I, I mean, you were very, initially you weren't very vocal, but you've gotten to really interject with the board. And I really appreciate all that you've done for the village and for the board. And we were a good team. And we'll plan, I'm gonna get with Dave and Bob over the next few weeks and see what our options are, what my options are. So, but thank you for all that you've done for the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Maribella.
Thank you. Trustee. Yeah, I gotta, you know, let somebody else say it, might be, I guess. It happens. Life happens. It's hopefully it's the right direction for you. Yeah, thanks for, a lot of people think, they always say, "Oh, you make a lot of..." We make beer money here. You do it because you wanna do it. It's not like you're doing this for an occupation. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sometimes life's things happens. Good luck. I mean, I've known you for a long time.
So, I'll be going away.
I know. Just wanna say that I treat the, the whole diving thing, like we were talking earlier, and it is cool that a kid, a lot of the times you don't rescue, you never wanna rescue somebody, but it is your job to do that. So he did make a rescue. It gave the person a chance. So that was really nice. And that's why we do spend the money for that because we want our kids out there. We're a community. I grew up swimming in Lake Michigan. We all did. It happens. An accident happens. So it's nice to know that we have support like that in our community. And just a shout out to Scott and, and Van did the trivia. I mean, it was slow nights, but we worked at the, the summer fair was there and he had to make a tough decision. Now, a lot of people know him. He had to call that. And that, and I talked to him, a lot of us talked to him. And I was like, hey, being a lot of boss of burden today, do what you think you need to do. And he made the call and he made the right call because the bottom fell out. And it's tough because we would spend a lot more money. People don't realize that trying to protect and try just canceling and rebooting. So kudos to you for making, I mean, it's a tough spot, but I know you get paid to do that, but it's , it's hard anyways. And you have, you didn't wanna disappoint the village, you know, that's the hard part. You don't wanna disappoint. And thank you, two gentlemen. That's just gonna be great. I mean, I'm glad you, this, this is gonna be cool. I think, like we said, it used to be really, I mean, people come out for this. This is what, what the park is about. I mean, I know they go to the beach in Kyle. It just could be a new thing now that we're starting. And if, if he's giving us that parking lot to park, you know, we got, with the park on the road, that park. So it'll be nice. And that's all I got.
I had to also say, well, Scott's, the cast line, the fireworks and the van, yeah, you are absolutely true, Trustee.
That's a, that's a...
I mean, that's a hard thing to do.
Yes.
I mean, 'cause that's kind of the attraction at the end, is the van and, and fireworks. Very hard to do, but he made the right call.
And we already got it rescheduled, but it's ten in the week. It's not a set date, but it's coming.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Maribella. We need to go on closed session for personnel issue. Mayor, we have motion to go on a closed session.
Right, the Rock.
We go outside.
I was just gonna mention one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a fire district board meeting today.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they graciously donated another fifteen thousand dollars to the fire department today for the purpose of... ATW, I believe, is for some donation money to accomplish that. So my thanks goes out to the fire district.
Definitely got that. Thank you. You told me that earlier, but thank you.
I just remembered, sorry.
No, that's okay. All right, you need to go to closed session. Any motion? So, Brokoff?
Brayden, hi. Lizbeth, Maribella, McKirkey. Lukerkey.